One more minute, hello.
Mayor, you're echoing. Mayor.
Mayor, we cannot hear you.
We have three members of Mayor and Council.
Now is good.
Start with a roll call. And calling the meeting. Okay. Agenda, the special legislation meeting of the Mayor and City Council, City of Mar-a-Ranier, this Tuesday, February twenty eighth, seven P M. This is a virtual meeting. Call to order, Jimmy Tarlo.
Yeah.
Luke Cheswick.
Here.
Valerie Woodall.
I'm here.
And I'm here, so Jared should be on his virtual way. All right, perfect. We do have four quorum. Next is going to be the pledge of allegiance. Luke, since you're the next one on the rotation for Vice Mayor, can you go ahead and lead the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. There is going to be a review of the agenda at this moment. Can you move it up, Melissa? And there's one item that we will be adding is just mainly support for our letter for Luminous. Jimmy, send it out. And Melissa, you have it available, right? So that'll be it. It's a simple letter of support, but wanted to make sure it's here so that way the community gets to see it as well. Other than that, do me a favor, Luke. Can you go ahead and read just the legislative meeting agenda?
One, call to order. Two, review the agenda. Three, public comment. Four, ARPA discussion and vote number twenty seven on the emergency rental and utility assistance program. Five, introduction and first reading of ordinance zero three twenty twenty three rent stabilization. Wait, what is that? Is this the amendment?
Yes.
The first reading of the amendment? Gotcha. Thank you. Six adjournment.
All right. Is there any opposition on adding the letter of support to Luminous? And if there's none, Melissa, go ahead and add it to the agenda, please.
So seven will be a letter of support to Luminous with eight being adjournment.
Correct. And I see Vice Mayor has joined us. Please mark on the record that he is here. On Jared's office. Okay. So while Melissa gets this ready, we can move on to the next item. Item number three, that'll be public comment. Members of the community get to speak during public comment for three minutes uninterrupted. And if you are representing an organization, it's five minutes. And by doing that, you are a recognized member of that organization and you forfeit on the right of other members of the organization to speak upon. We will ask that if you are speaking either three or five minutes, that you respect the time. Because we would love for you, for more members of the community to speak in case they want to speak. So if you are online with us through Zoom, put your name, last name, block and street number on the chat, and I'll call upon you. If you're on Facebook, you could put your comment. And if you're on the phone, let me know. We have had a couple residents that have been in the phone before that they cannot text or send us a message, and they have let us know that chooses to speak. We usually ask if you could wait for the item that you're going to speak on that is in the agenda, please hold until the item and utilize the public comment, ideally for items that are not on the agenda. Okay? All right, Jared, anything on Facebook?
No comments.
All right, thank you. And I see nothing on the chat. Anybody on the phone? Okay, hearing none. Public comment will be closed at this moment. Moving on to item number four, ARPA discussion and vote number twenty, discussion number twenty seven. Okay, Mayor Council, we discuss and vote on adding five thousand dollars to emergency rental utility assistance program. To make people familiar for this, the City of Mar-a-Ranier has had several rounds of aid that has been given to our renters in the city to be able to pay the, for the rent. It's been allocated through ARPA funding. This last round, we instructed the city manager, if we had more applications and more money needed to be allocated to inform us, and he did. So that discussion took place in the last work session. And that's the reason why it's here for vote. Council, any discussion? Or do you guys want to move for a vote and open it to discussion? So can I?
Move.
Go ahead, Luke.
I'll move that we add five thousand dollars to the emergency rental and utility assistance program via our ARPA funding stream.
Any second?
Seconded.
Is it probably move in second? I'll open up for discussion. If you are good with it, thumbs up will work or say you're good, and then we'll move on to any comment the public might have. Valerie?
I'm good with that, thank you.
Jared?
Yep, I'm good.
Luke? Jimmy?
Fine.
Seeing that all five of us are in agreement, I'm going to go ahead and call. Is there any of the public that would like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none. I will call for question. Any objection? Abstention? Hearing none. City manager, we're authorizing five thousand dollars more to be added to the rental, to emergency rental utility assistance program. And Luke, I know you have been working on making sure we balance our ARPA on our end. Can you make sure you add those extra five thousand dollars on the expense side or allocated side? You're muted, Luke. It might be a great speech, but.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. I will do that. I won't do it right now in real time, but I'll recirculate it to staff and C C everyone.
That's fine. I just need to make sure we put it on someone. I know you've been doing a great job at it. Thank you so much, Luke. Okay, so moving on to the next item, item number six. Ooh, sorry, my apology. Introduction and first reading ordinance. I shouldn't read like that. Introduction and first reading ordinance oh three dash twenty three rent stabilization. This is like the amendment, so let's make sure we put that correctly because it makes it sound like it's, we're trying to revote on the old one. All right, so this is more of a clarification when it comes to the CPI U. And it's right here. It's amending the chapter three D rent stabilization, series three D, one of two definitions, to clarify the definition, of the rental stabilization allowance. So you see a lot of the were as, keep going, keep going, and you heard those were as as well in the other one. So what's being amended is the definition. Keep moving up, but just a little bit higher, right there. Section three D dash one of two definitions, the term rest of the session allowance being sixty percent of the annual increase in the consumer price index, oh CPI slash U, for the Silver Spring, Rockville, Frederick area multiplied by the rent to charge in the last calendar year preceding the proposed increase of the units is vacant but was privileged rented sixty percent of the annual increase in the CPI U multiplied by the rent that could have been charged had the unit been occupied. In the preceding calendar year, the city should publicize the rest of the station allows on its website. So keep moving, Melissa? So basically, is the bottom part is more, it'll be adopted once it passes. So that's it. It's just a clarification on the definition to make it a little bit more easier. And that's it. All right, so council.
I have my hand up.
I understand, Jimmy. I haven't even got my sentence out.
I wasn't sure you're saying.
Go, 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 go ahead, Jimmy.
I think it is a way it's been, is an ordinance, the ordinance is the amendment. So I think it's probably correctly done. I think that's what the listeners sent down. Just, just for people, one of our constituents pointed that the CPI basically has all the different things like food, and it's every forty or fifty years, it started a new base. So about forty years ago, it started out as a base of a hundred. And every year, as the prices go up, it's based on that. So actually, the CPI this year is two hundred and eighty. And but the thing is that it went from two hundred and seventy-two to two hundred and eighty. And so it's the difference that is basically the percent of what the, what people usually say is a CPI, usually means the CPI increase. And then, you know, eventually, they'll probably set it back at a hundred again, and then it'll keep on going up. But when they talk about CPI, they're really not talking about the raw number. They're talking about the increase. Just a little background, in case people didn't know what it is. Actually, CPI today, I think, is two eighty-two. That's it, Mayor. Thank you. Have we lost the mayor?
My apology, my mic went mute. This is the first reading. So like I mentioned earlier, it's a small clarification right there that is important. And so that way, but does not change the rest of the ordinance that was passed. Okay? All right, council, anything else? Since we're in Word One, Luke, followed by Jared and then Valerie. Go ahead.
No, I think this is mostly just for folks' notice. This was our original intent, and the language just more clearly matches the intent here. So thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you. I'm good on this. Thank you.
Jared?
Yep, and just wanted to, you know, kind of reaffirm for residents, this is not a policy change, it's a technical correction to the bill that clarifies our original intent. Thank you. No concerns.
Perfect. Melissa, can you put it to the whole top part of it? Thank you so much. So any, anything else to add to this? So we're good? Okay. Hearing, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this specific item? Okay, hearing none. This is the first reading. Okay. And Melissa, give me the ordinance again. Put it up. I want to see one thing. No, put it all the way to the top where the first three, okay, move it down, whatever. Move it up. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Okay, so Melissa, you'll go ahead and showcase that today was the first reading for this. Okay? Thank you so much. So council, we're in agreement that this is good. Yes? Any objection to this? We're good? Hearing no objections or abstentions that the first really has gone through and we're good. All right, so Melissa, make sure that it's put on the March agenda for the second reading. Okay? All right, perfect. Moving on to item number six, discussion and vote on letter support for Luminous Health Doctors Community Hospital Certified of Need. The team at Luminous has reached out. Jimmy, you could speak more about this, basically asking for support. Can you put the letter up, Melissa? That is, who descended, basically on the importance of why Luminous needs to be, as a support certificate of need, right? As you guys know, we don't have a lot of hospitals or centers around the area. Luminous happens to be one of them. Jimmy, do you want, do you want to have a few words on this? Or where are we at?
To chime in, my own mute, yeah. Just that, I think especially, I heard a presentation they made to the consociate delegation, and especially as a need for women for birthing rooms and actually midwifery in our county, a lot of people have, can't do that in D C. I'm not sure the new hospital center specializes in that. So they're trying to expand the, what used to be called the doctors' hospital up in Landham. It's a good thing. We should sign on.
Okay, continue doing, can you show the second part of the letter? So there's a complete letter. All right, council, I'm going to open it up to you to have your thoughts on this. And if it's approved, this will go out in letterhead, and I'm stopping by tomorrow anyway, signing it, and it'll be on this electronic way tomorrow. Okay, so I'm going to go Valerie, Jared, and Luke. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think this is definitely worth supporting. Luminous has done a lot of work over the last couple of years, especially during the pandemic. And so I'm totally supportive.
Thank you so much, Jared.
Yep, hundred percent of support. Thank you.
Luke?
Totally support. Thank you.
So can I have a motion on the floor to support this?
Moved.
Second.
Is we're probably more than second. Any discussion, abstention, objection? Hearing none. Melissa, put it in letterhead, and we'll sign in and email tomorrow. Okay? Thank you so much. Okay, so I will take one second of privilege, one minute, just to let you guys know that today we were testifying at the county, Prentius County Council for CB seven, which is their emergency rent stabilization. The ordinance did pass nine two one. The county executive isn't support, so now we're waiting for county executive to sign it. And like I said, she says support, so this, once she signs that, it becomes law. But we definitely were there. There was a full house, so that's definitely a positive term when it comes to restabilization. They were happy. And they send their regards to the whole council for the leadership on passing restitution in the city. And we also, I made myself available in case, because they are going to be having a work group to be part of the work group as well to inquire when it comes to this one year. It's one year, this does not apply to buildings that are five years and older, just FYI. So, um, yeah, so.
Less than five years and more than five years?
More than five years. So if anything that's, sorry, if it's five and under, it would not apply. Five and over, it will apply. Okay, so that's something to take into account. So once the county executive sign in, because rural the county, and there were, it was a full house, people from everywhere speaking. Big thank you to Councilmember Ariana for leading, but also Jolene Ivy, Eric Olson, Ed Burrows, you know, who also like, who also were like the prime sponsors, well, that's Sandinoga, who are the prime sponsors. Today, also Calvin Hawkins and Wanika Fisher, council members both join, join the call. And there was only one I know that was Mil Frank, Councilmember Mil Franklin, who is also a council member at large, who represents us as well. All right, so I just.
One question is, what does it do in terms of percentage or?
Three percent. It's three percent across the border. So just keep that in mind. So one is science, that that will be the emergency one. So technically, we'll fall there, the three percent emergency one. I'll give you guys a copy of the final one. I do have it in paper now electronically, but I'll still be happy to send an electronic version, so you guys could take a look at it. And also for our team to be aware that that's going to be on it. So during that one year, ideally by the nine months, they're going to come with suggestions, like strong suggestions of what they want to do permanent. And go through the approval process so that way, that one year, it will fall. So in the process, it gives us time to be able to work on our administrative end and everything else that we need to make ours happen. Okay? All right, so anything else you guys need questions about it? Happy to talk to you guys offline as well. All right, but please know that your, yes, this and the yes on rest of the station for City of Mar-a-Ranier resonate waves, not just through the county, but through other municipalities who are very happy to see this and other municipalities, including Highsville. It's in the work of acting theirs as well. All right, so that's just it. So I've been very busy. I've been very busy working on restabilization on the county and on the state level to be able to allow the local election, the local electors to be able to do just cost when it comes to renters. So renters protections for that with the county will have the power to do that. And in return, so do we. All right, so that's my five minutes of privilege, but I wanted to make sure you guys are informed of this. Okay, all right, moving on to item number seven, German of the legislative meeting.
I move.
Seconded.
Is we're probably moved in second. Any objections, abstentions? Hearing none. This special legislative session has come to an end, and we'll move on to our next meeting. Council, we're good. You need a five minutes to stretch. Thumbs up. I see Luke saying good. Jimmy, you're good. Jared, good, Valerie, good. Okay, let me know if you need a breaker budget. It's usually longer than we wanted. Okay, agenda for the proposed FY twenty twenty-four budget work session of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Mar-a-Ranier, Maryland, virtual work session, Tuesday, February twenty eight, twenty twenty-three, following the special legislative meeting. Right now, seven twenty-one, I will do a call of order. Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Jared's office?
I'm here.
Jimmy Tarlo?
Yeah.
Luke Cheswick?
Here.
And I'm here. So it's a full, a full council. All right. Item number two, review of the agenda for five minutes. The Mayor and Council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest of discussion. Vice Mayor, can you please go ahead and read the work session, the work session when it comes to budget, please?
Yep. Number one, call to order. Number two, review of agenda. Number three, presentation on proposed FY twenty twenty-four budget. And number four, adjournment.
Thank you so much. So I know we have an hour scheduled to this, but it is a work session for the budget. And we have received the budget as Mayor and Council electronically last Friday. Our copies are as the hall as well. So thank you so much. So council, we're good with the agenda as presented. Do you need anything on it?
Mayor, I'd just like to make sure before we get going here, maybe we can have some understanding about, you know, I know this is our first look at the budget. So we've done this differently in the past. I don't want to, I don't want to have a lot of kind of wasted time reviewing every line item. So I just, I want to just have clarity on sort of the, what we're going to have Mr. Kamali and Ron present on. Maybe they have a plan already for what they want to do. Maybe you have a plan. I just want to make sure we're all good with that before we run into it.
So Luke, the agenda item calls for a presentation of the budget, followed by a work session today, as well as a combination of both. So basically, it's a run through of like the budget to be able to hear. Usually, we read the line items to be able to account for those that I might not be able to visually see it, but also for us to have a discussion on it. Because it's the presentation on it, and then it's like the public has feedback, that'll be the next meeting. But right now, it's basically like they're going to have a presentation, then we go right through. Then there also, apart, aside from the presentation that I didn't see any changes from my original email, they have to present what they're proposing the tax to be, because it's by law required that we need to do that. And then we're going to be going in through the budget to have a read through of it. That's the reason why this item got pulled up on its own on a Tuesday, because if it was a thirty-minute thing, it would have been just added to like the meeting last week. But yeah, so it's a run through of it.
So just to clarify, so it's just the presentation that the city manager and the financial consultant have and the proposed tax rate, right? That's, that's all.
The agenda, so if you look at the schedule, Melissa, can you put the schedule up in the screen? Yeah, you could, you could move it up.
I don't have a schedule.
It's on the presentation, Melissa, it's like page three on the presentation, something like that.
I have it in front of me. It says, February twenty-eighth, it says exactly what is already said there on the agenda.
I know personally, I'm going to take most of my comments for the work session. That's something that I just want I'm going to do. So I just want to, you know, say that.
For the Saturday.
No, the Saturday is the hearing and the continuation of the work session. That's when the like, you know, okay, you guys could do as you want, but on the agenda says, Mayor and Council, hold a work session, propose budget for FY twenty-four and discuss the tax rate. So this has to be done today, because we need to publish a notice on March nine. So unless you guys want to carry this meeting to somewhere between now and March nine, which I don't think we want to, that's the reason why this wasn't a thirty-minute item. It's more of like in-depth on it, because we need to discuss the budget, but we also need to do a run through of the budget. So that way, we could like, for the hearing, people have already heard it, have seen it, and they could make their comments, and we could have a work session based it on the changes that we want to make. If not, this is like a dead time, you know, like you just like write one, two things, and then you do nothing about it. So but by the night, we need to be able to publish what the proposed tax break is and going to, and that's the reason we're going to a little bit more in depth, because this is supposed to be a work session on the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
I think Mr. Kamali has his hand raised.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, mention something. Usually, in this work session or special time that we present, the city manager will present the budget, and we don't even discuss the tax rate. And that was there, and that was my confusion. But if we want to read line by line, this is going to take more than three or four hours. I'm sorry. And I thought that we're going to discuss it on March twenty-fifth. With, at that time, we go line by line, and between now and then, the mayor and council are welcome to ask me any question. We can, you know, go through that process by the data that are listed in the budget calendar. And I didn't think that we're going to go through all the information tonight.
Right. So I just want to clarify, because some things. So I think that we usually have the highlights, the presentation, and the tax rate. We announce what the tax rate is. That's all we have to do in the first one. And then, I don't know how we, I mean, we could go through and highlight the bottom line figures for every department, but I don't know how we go through line by line with stuff. I don't, we've never done that in the past on the first reading. It's always been saved for the Saturday session. So I'm confused a little bit, Mayor.
I will say to you that if we went until March twenty-fifth, that's like way into the budget here. And that's the reason why this, an email I'll say, make sure this budget's available for the community as soon as possible, like, you know, by Friday, and have paper copies and announce that that's available for the community, so that way they could go through or read through with us. You guys could propose like whatever you guys want, but.
I think you're not, yeah, I think you're not hearing what I'm saying. So I think we can have the presentation, have the tax rate, you can see the bottom line figures for every department, so that the budget's there, everybody can see it, everybody can get it. We get it out of the way, but we can't go line by line through this at seven thirty on a Tuesday night. That's just not practical.
We actually can, Luke. That's the reason why we're pulling this meeting together. If not, why was this meeting scheduled to be a Tuesday work session, meeting on the budget? If not, we'll have been included on the regular meeting, if I've taken thirty minutes. That's part of the thing. But you guys could do it as you guys want. And then like, you know, if we have to do us another meeting to be able to do this, then we'll go ahead and do it. I'm fine with that. But at the end of the day, it's like, you know, um, you know, the presentation didn't even have the discussed tax rates on. Bring it up and say, hey, it needs to be done. But go ahead, Jimmy.
I mean, it's not one extreme or the other. I mean, the presentation could be made. We can ask questions. Uh, Mr. Kamali did propose a tax rate. Uh, I'm not, I don't really agree with it. And we may have to discuss it at work session. But I mean, he should make a presentation. We should, you know, we have an hour to talk about things. So let's, you know, I'm not going to say nothing, but you know, I think that my thought is that the in in depth, you know, going over every single line and whether we, you know, other proposals, you know, should come up to the work session. But I would suggest that we just kind of move ahead, get the presentation and then, you know, see what other kinds of questions we had.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I I think we could do.
Valerie and Jared, I need to hear from you guys as well. What do you guys want to do? Because um.
Yeah, I I. I concur with Jimmy's approach.
Go ahead, Valerie.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that sounds okay to me. It sounds like we're having a discussion of the tax rate that's been proposed. Um, and we can look at the presentation and then see what we need to do next. I think that's okay. If we have to have a second meeting to go through this a little more before March ninth, that that we might have to do that. But I think for right now, let's just hear the presentation and the proposed tax rate and then let's discuss it.
Okay, let's go move forward. Um, Melissa, please look at a calendar as well because we will be scheduling another meeting um, before March nine as well.
I'm not sure we have to.
Why? Why would we have to do that?
Excuse me, you guys. I asked her to look at the calendar. I didn't say it's going to forward. I'm asking her to be ready in case this needed. One and two, you guys keep talking over me. I said, all I said is like, Melissa, be ready in case this is needed. That's all I said. Nothing else. I didn't order her to like, schedule a meeting. I said, please look at calendar in case another meeting is needed. And that said, Valerie mentioned if another meeting is needed, we need to like look into it. That's the reason why I follow up with my statement. That's just it. I'm being respectful of like what some of us are also thinking, but go ahead, Mr. Kamali with your presentation.
All right. All right. Melissa, can you, can you bring the presentation? All right, let's go. Let's go to the highlights, please. All right. Hello, mayor and council, Mount Rainier residents and staff. It is my pleasure to present the proposed budget and the CIP capital improvement plan for the city of Mount Rainier for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. I would like to draw your attention to the following highlights, which is, you see it on the screen, we have the budget schedule in this highlights, we have the budget overview, we have the budget breakdown and the last thing. Uh, we are here to respond to your questions. Next, we have the budget calendar. As you see, on February twenty fourth, the city manager submit the proposed budget to the city council. On February twenty eighth, the city manager, which is tonight, will present the proposed budget to the council. Council holds a work session on the proposed budget and tax rates. On March nine, twenty twenty three, the notice published on the hearing and the schedule for March twenty fifth and the notice of constant yield. March twenty fifth is a public hearing and the public comment on the proposed budget, council work session on the budget. And then we go to April eleventh, which is the discussion of the proposed budget and reading of the budget ordinance into the record. Then we move to April eighteen, which is the public hearing and discussion by the council during council meeting. Next, we have April twenty fifth, the second reading of FY twenty four budget ordinance, possible vote by mayor and council. And the last, we have May second and June the sixth, if needed, vote by mayor and council on FY twenty four budget. And the next page, we have the budget overview goals. The goal of this, this proposed FY twenty four budget is to maintain the proper level and quality of the city infrastructure and services. Pay the current cost with the current revenue, maintain the stability of the tax structures. Next, budget breakdown compared to FY twenty three. Real estate tax revenue continues to grow, but more slowly than in recent years. Income tax revenue is beginning to plateau. Speed camera revenue is beginning to plateau too at the same. ARPA funds will continue to be used in FY twenty four, as you know that we haven't used that much of FY two, uh, ARPA funded. Here we have a chart that will include the revenue, the city's revenue eh, is obtained from the sources, which is tax revenue, which is forty six point seven percent. And then we have thirty six point nine, which is the grants. And I'm sorry, I have to look at my notes. And uh, because this is too small for me to read it. All right. So we have six point two percent of the revenue comes from um, finance forfeitures. And then we have four percent that it comes from intergovernmental. And then uh, we have five percent that comes from license and permits. And uh, so that will include the hundred percent of revenue. I hope that I didn't miss anything. All right. Next page, we have the budget breakdown compared to FY twenty three. In this proposed budget, I'm proposing three percent total increase for all employees. And then we have a proposed significant increase for the police officer covered by the CBA if the mayor and council approve that because the mayor and council have not seen the proposed, which was negotiated by uh, the city manager, finance, consultant, city attorney and FOP representative. And in this proposed budget, we have a contin- contingency, contingency of fifty five thousand. We have two hundred thousand dollars for a street resurfacing, which will, which I would, you know, provide the proposal to mayor and council sometimes this week for that two hundred thousand dollars. And then we have the general fund expenses. So all this cities fund expenses, including, it includes twenty four point seven, which is wages and leave pay. We have thirty six point nine grant expenses. Then we have uh, six point six, which is infrastructure and facility maintenance. Then we have six point two, which is the professional services. We have three point two percent, which is other servicing and charges. And we have uh, two point four, which is debt services. We have another two point, two point four percent, which is, which is the capital overlay. And uh, the last one is two point one, which is material and supplies. Also, we have one point one percent, which is repair and and maintenance, which will be the hundred percent of the expenses for FY twenty four, the proposed FY twenty four budget. Then we look at the employees for FY twenty four, we stay the same as FY twenty four. There is no change. Changes in fully employees. So we have the general government, we have three. Admin services, we have five. Economic development is one. Code compliance is four. Public works is ten. And the total for FY twenty four will be, oh, I forgot the public safety. Thank you, Melissa, twenty three. And the total is going to be forty six employees as we had the same number in FY twenty three. So that's the proposed number of employees. Ongoing developments, um, as you see, the real estate values are not increasing at the same rate as the previous years. And then we have the taxable, you know, personal income is beginning to level off. And the grant activities is strong and the city has significant ARPA funds to use in FY twenty four. I'll let Ron to go through this process. Ron, could you please read the revenue numbers, the increase and decrease compared to FY twenty three? Ron? If Ron is not there, I'm going to do it. All right. So.
Ron, you're on mute.
Sorry. No, I'm here. I'm sorry. I was on mute.
Okay, Mayor Brian Wilson, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, for tax revenue, we're budgeting a six million, two hundred and sixty nine, two hundred and three dollars, which is a six percent increase over twenty three. For licenses and permits, six hundred and sixty seven thousand, one hundred, which is a six percent decrease from fiscal twenty three. For intergovernmental, uh, five hundred and forty one thousand, nine hundred and fifty four, which is a forty seven percent increase over fiscal twenty three. Charges for services, twenty four thousand, five hundred, which is no change. Fines and forfeitures, eight hundred and thirty five thousand, four hundred, which is a six percent increase over fiscal twenty three. Miscellaneous, one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred, which is a three hundred and eighteen percent increase over fiscal twenty three. And then for grants.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm trying to follow you on this. Is this a page in what in the budget we handed out? Can follow you?
It's the summary page.
That's the summary page of the presentation, Jimmy.
Oh, but it's not in what was handed to us.
Uh, I believe it was.
Yeah, I think Melissa.
It was in the package.
It was in the package, Jimmy.
All right, I'll look for it. Okay. Oh, it's in the package, not in the book.
This is not in the book. That's what Jimmy's asking. If it's, if it's on the budget book.
So it's in the agenda package. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, for grant revenue, uh, we're budgeting four million, nine hundred and forty six thousand, five hundred and sixty three, uh, which is a thirty nine percent increase over fiscal twenty three. Then in the expenses, um, we have three million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars for wages. One million, seven hundred and fifty four thousand, six hundred and eighty eight for employee benefits. Uh, I'm sorry, that's a two percent increase over the previous year and then wages were an eight percent increase over the previous year. Materials and supplies, two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred. That's a one percent decrease. Repairs and maintenance, one hundred and forty five thousand. That's a seven percent increase. Professional services, eight hundred and twenty nine, eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty, which is a ten percent increase. Other services and charges, four hundred and twenty two thousand, four hundred and eighty four dollars, which is a thirty five percent decrease. Community activities, one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred, which is a seven percent increase. Infrastructure and facilities maintenance, eight hundred and eighty one thousand, seven fifty. That's a one percent increase. Capital outlay, three hundred and twenty six thousand. That's a five hundred and fifty two percent increase. Debt services and contingency, three hundred and twenty six thousand, five eighty. And that's a a one hundred and thirty nine percent increase. And then grants expense, four million, nine forty six, five sixty three, which is a thirty nine percent increase. Just to point out to you, um, I uh, discovered this this afternoon. Um, the total expenses are increasing eighteen percent, not forty seven percent. That's a formula error. And I'll correct that and we'll send new pages out to everyone.
And we have the next page, which is the question. So we welcome mayor and council or resident if they have any question for me or Ron.
Okay, council, um, I I've, I'll tell you what I think is part of the confusion. Usually the presentation is then inside a meeting, so that way this becomes the work session. So moving forward for next year, can we make sure that's addressed so that we could have a whole work session on this budget and not the whole Saturday? So the presentation, Mr. Kamali and Ron, make sure it happens at the meeting. Uh, that'll be um, the February meeting. Okay, even if it's the work session and that way like when we have this discussion, it's like we could go into deb line item by line item because if not Saturday is going to be Saturday, it's more like the retouching of the line items and not, how do you call it, um, a a first run through of everything. Jimmy, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Uh, so I was confused about a couple of things. One is uh, roads and sidewalks. Uh, you have one figure of five hundred thousand in one of the highlights and then you had another figure of two hundred thousand from CIP. So I was wondering if it's seven hundred thousand or is it, are they two different things? Somewhere you said five hundred thousand in one of these slides and then somewhere else you say two hundred thousand.
I explained that Jimmy, uh, five hundred thousand dollars is for the sidewalk improvement. And that item has been just, you know, the way it is written. It says a street and sidewalk, but mostly the work is done on the sidewalk based on the tool design recommendation. And usually the council put, mayor and council put five percent of the total cost, which is five hundred thousand dollars. But mayor was requesting to do some uh, streets resurfacing, which we have a proposal for two hundred thousand dollars at the different location. That's going to be only street resurfacing. And based on your approval and the rest of the council, we can move forward with that. So it's two different item for seven hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand is basically for the implementation.
Tool design.
Tool design, brother.
Yes.
Uh, the the second question, which I think we should probably uh, when we have a work session, also like have a a sense of how much ARPA money there is and whether some of the ARPA money can be used. I don't, I don't know, maybe when Luke or whoever comes up with the general survey, whether some of the ARPA money can be used for some of the, for some of the uh, you know, interest, you know, some of the street project money as opposed to out of the budget, whether we could do something else with some of the budget money and or do something about the tax rate. So I don't know how much is left in the ARPA, but I think, you know, uh, I one, one thought I know had been talking about is that saving some of the ARPA money for the implementation of the tools design. So that should be part of the discussion, I think. How much is left? Do you know?
Jimmy, is that your, any, does that answer your question?
No, I mean, uh, some of the question maybe is how much is, how much has been not uh, implemented out of the ARPA money?
I'll let Luke to respond to that question. And I think we had the table that was worked out by Luke. And I'm sure Luke can respond. Otherwise I can look into it and get back to you, Jimmy.
And then one last question is.
Seven hundred, seven hundred. I think it was seven hundred and seventy eight thousand, um, so about seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand. After our last.
And this is the last question is how much is in the reserves and because that wasn't part of the, I mean, I know you said contingency, but you didn't talk about the reserves.
I can, I can give you that. I can give you that number right now. I believe that we have four point six million and uh, which is the fund balance plus three point two million, which is the, in our investment with the PNC. If you look at the budget on the first page, on the memo that are included, that information is there. If you look at the budget on the first page, on the memo that are included, that information is there.
Okay, thank you.
In the second, second paragraph.
Yeah, if I could clarify that.
Ron.
Our, our fund balance at the end of fiscal twenty-two was four point six million dollars. Of that, uh, three point two is in our investment accounts. So they, they don't add together. Um, that they are, are different ideas. So if we want four point six is the fund balance.
We wanted to transfer like a sum of money for the, for working on Pats Hall. That would, the total would be four point six we'd be looking at.
Yes, four point six is the available money.
Uh, Jimmy, you're, you're through?
Yeah.
Jared, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, uh, I, thanks for the clarity on the streets and sidewalks stuff. So it sounds like, I forgot this right, right, two hundred and fifty-ish for, um, streets and sidewalks implementation. And that's potentially implementing the first part of our plan. Um, and then the others for road, road resurfacing. I just wanted to think if I understand, you know, we're gonna be chasing recent capital grants that we can access so that correctly from all the two hundred some, the thousand some that we're putting into implementing the plan could could be covered by a federal grant or state grant, correct?
Hopefully.
Or is, okay. The, the other thing I was gonna mention was for at least safe streets for all, there's a local match requirement.
Which is twenty percent.
Which is twenty percent. But, and Ron or Mr. Kamali, correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't think we can use, usually you can't match federal, federal.
Ron, that, that is correct. The match needs to be from our own funds.
Okay, just, just something to keep in mind for next year. I know that our with, with anything we're going for, that the ARCA funds, you know, if it's state money and then we have federal money to make a match, if it's a federal grant, we can't use the ARCA money to make up the, you know, the twenty percent non-federal. So, okay, that was it.
You're through, Jared? Good?
Yep.
Go ahead, Luke, then Valerie.
Thank you. Um, I have a question on the intergovernment, uh, intergovernmental revenue and the change there. What's the reason for the forty-seven percent jump there? And then maybe you can explain that also in light of the, you know, we only have the two fifty so far, um, in actuals. I know that's because we still have a lot of the, a couple of quarters left here. So, um.
Sure. The, yeah, the big jump in the budgeted number for intergovernmental is, uh, having the correct, um, number for the state police aid.
Yeah.
Um, right now, as the fiscal twenty-three budget exists, we have a very low number on that line item because the budget modification has not been, uh, completed yet.
Okay.
Once that is completed, then the increase in, in that category would be much less.
Great. And then the miscellaneous jump there, what's the, what's behind that?
Yeah, well, um, part of that is because, um, our interest on investments is going up significantly.
Great.
Um, that, that was budgeted for three thousand this year. We, we are going well above that at this point. We've budgeted seventy thousand for next year. Um, and then we also have rent income, uh, that was not budgeted for this year. We, we've rented out the, the bottom floor of the Miles Building. So we have thirty-three thousand, six hundred budgeted for rental income next year.
Great. Excellent.
So between those two, that, that's a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. No, that's great. Um, Melissa, can you scroll down to, um, just a little bit? That works. Um, and I thought I had one more question. Um. The, oh, yeah, the, the other services and charges dropping down thirty-five percent? For expenses?
Yes, that, that's largely because of the contingency.
Okay.
Going from two seventy-five to fifty-five.
Yeah. Great.
That's it, Luke.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Valerie?
Um, hey, all right, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, well, thank you for putting this together. Um. Um, I have a million, billion questions, so, but I will spare everybody from all of my questions. And I think Mr. Kamali, if maybe we can sit down and I can just walk through some of my questions, um.
Anytime.
Just in terms of the actual budget itself, I didn't, you know, this budget presentation is smaller. I do have questions about the staffing, um, capacity. I know that we had talked a little bit, um, in the past about adding staff potentially, um, and thinking through that and what that looks like in terms of community development and some of the programs that you have running, um, like rent stabilization and, you know, um, now that that's passed and then, um, as well as like community development services for the rental, you know, programs. And if we're doing a home repair program, like who's running that, who's managing it, who's bottom lining it, making it happen? So I definitely have questions in that vein. Um, I will, I will note in this presentation you have, um, if you go up a little bit, Melissa, maybe you can go up into the titles. I just wanna be clear, the FY twenty-three act, the FY twenty-three actuals, it says from July to January twenty-two. It should be January twenty-three, if that's what we're using as the, as the fiscal year, um, title, um, just so that we're clear in this. It says July twenty-one to.
Yes, it, uh, um, it's actually December twenty-two.
Okay.
So it's July twenty-two to December twenty-two.
Right, and here's the difference. So I just wanna make sure we're at the same timeframe the whole time.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I don't have any major questions on the high level stuff. I do have a lot of detail oriented, so I will reach out to you to answer those. Um. Um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Does that cover your questions?
It's just the beginning of my questions, but yes.
I know. I definitely was prepared for today. Um, so uh, Luke did cover some of my questions when it came to the big jumps, right? Uh, so Ron, by when are we gonna have the one that shows the fifteen percent? And not the forty-seven to be able to have more, more clear information on it? And the other thing I will suggest is for this summary to be, um, added to the website so that our people know what we're looking at. Um, I know we're seeing the GIP package, but the reality is like we need to make sure that when we are presented a summary as this, if you guys go at it in the agenda booklet, it definitely will help us better to guide us through it. Um, because I went through the budget, so more of my questions are about the budget because, um, I did notice some of the committees said they did not submit any requests, um, including the Arts Commission. So unless like, um, I'm missing something that the Arts Commission is not gonna, has not requested any money, would not be doing any Arts Commission work.
Mayor.
So let me, let me finish. Um, that is something that, um, it, it definitely makes me concerned because that means like that wasn't even factoring the numbers that, um, that need to be presented. The other thing to address, and I'll give you time to answer, Mr. Kamali, um. The other thing is like, um, I know one of the emails that you sent, you said you recommend no change on the, on the tax, um, um, to leave it as is. Um, it is usually customary for us to reduce the tax every year. So I do need to see one, two, three cent reduction of the budget. Um, for us to figure out what it looks like, so look through this budget and figure out what is gonna be cut around or for us to be able to do that, um, as well. So that'll be, um, my, my initial proposal, but I, I will say to you that, um, I, I will have to look into what other committees have now submitted proposals. And if that's the case, I need to know what this number is looking like for change. And the second question is when the rent civilization passing into ordinance, have that, um, been taken into consideration when it comes to, um, the money we're gonna be receiving from, um, from that ordinance, uh, being passed? And if it is, where, where is it located at? Um, and where can I look at it in the budget? Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, uh, can I answer your question?
Go ahead.
Uh, the, the only committee that did not send us the proposed budget was the Arts Commission. And if you look in the community activities, you see everybody except the arts and they sent it to me yesterday, which they're asking for nineteen thousand dollars. And we can go back and put that number in and update the budget. And we have all the rest of the committees and they have sent it to me and it should be in the admin services, which it shows under the community activities. You should see everybody over there except the Arts Commission, which is going to be nineteen thousand. Regarding the rent of stabilization, no, we have not put anything because we were not asked whether we have the staff capacity to do that. Because I was wondering and I've been waiting for that. Because I look at the staff and we have no staff, you know, capacity to handle that project. So that's why maybe Valerie just mentioned a good point. I need to, you know, talk to Valerie, but I thought Valerie is gonna talk to the rest of the council. Ron and I were, have not been informed regarding that, how much we're gonna get. And I think we appreciate if you could give us some information on that. We can update the budget if we have to.
Uh, Mr. Kamali, um, you guys should have a copy of the ordinance. It does say that there's gonna be one person added until see how much is added per unit. So you guys could do the math. Um, so you guys do have that information for you guys to be able to do the math. So that's something that I need you guys to make sure you guys are.
Will take you.
Ordinance. Um, so that way it's not a surprise. This ordinance has been like circulating on for a while before it got approved. So that's something that if you need more clarity, let us, let us know. And, um, being the lead writer of this, um, of this ordinance, if you had a question about staffing or how's it gonna be financed, because that was answering the meetings, you should definitely send an email to address this so that we had more clarity.
Okay, I'll do that.
So, um, so those are the questions, I think, for the most part, Council covered the other ones that I have. Um, so I am waiting on the January, like, um, financials. Um, Ron, if you could get us to us this week to Mayor and Council so we could better make decisions, we definitely appreciate them. Okay?
Yes, I'll, I'll have it to you this week.
Thank you so much, because that we better understand where the jumps are coming and seeing more, a little bit more clear what you're seeing. Because that, that, um, one month does makes a difference on, on us being able to evaluate this better, uh, with eyes open. So, um, so I'm gonna leave the questions for this part right now. Council, um, I'm gonna ask if you're good for right now and I'm gonna open it out to the public. Uh, Jimmy, is it your hand, old hand or new hand? Old? Okay. So, um.
No, no, new hand, sorry.
Oh, new hand. Thank, thank you, Jimmy. Go ahead.
So just so we clarify, uh, the March ninth, uh, it's gonna be the, uh, uh, budget and the constant yield rate. But constant yield rate, my understanding is not the rate that we're gonna be having, but the rate that, you know, with the property, phrasals, uh, what it would go down if we didn't do any, if we, if we kept the same rate. Ron, are you familiar with that? And just so we make sure, I know people are gonna get why you explain that, because I think the public's gonna wanna know that when they see that.
Sure, yeah, the, the constant yield rate is the rate that would produce the same amount of tax revenue, uh, given the change in the assessed value of the property. And since the assessed value of the property, uh, goes up every year, uh, the constant yield rate, um, is, uh, lower than the current tax rate. Uh, it's informational only. We, we are not required to adopt the constant yield tax rate. Uh, but we do have to publicly disclose that. We have to take out an ad, uh, to publish, uh, that information to the public.
So when, just, just, so when we, uh, publish that, uh, we, I know the, uh, city manager has proposed no change in the budget, but we're not, we're, that's still open for discussion and no, no change in the tax rate. But that's still up, up for discussion. We're not gonna be posting that. We're just gonna be posting this other figure, which is.
Well, yes, in, in that ad though, um, we, it, I'm going by memory, uh, uh, as to the timing. Last year at this time, when we published the ad, we, we disclosed the constant yield tax rate. We said, uh, at that time, we weren't anticipating a reduction. Uh, and then the council, um, uh, approved a reduction at a later date. Yeah. Um, so the ad that we put in the paper on the ninth does not commit us to, uh, keeping the rate where it is.
Thank you.
Uh, Melissa, anything else to add on the posting for the newspaper? I know, uh, your team works very hard on this.
We got it, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Uh, I asked Melissa to speak. Go ahead, Melissa.
Ron covered everything. Yes, what he's saying is correct. We not committed to what we post and we usually follow. Um, we usually send it as that and they usually verify it before we publish it.
And what newspapers are gonna go on, Melissa?
The Gazette, the one that we usually use.
Thank you so much. Just in case the residents are looking for it, that's where they will find it. Thank you, Melissa. Um, go ahead, Luke.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, are we gonna talk about the tax rate here? Can Mr. Kamali announce what it is and what the constant yield rate is, just so that we have it? Um, up there for, for folks to see and if we want a discussion on that, we can.
Yeah, that's why someone asked, has anybody had a question regarding this item? If not, we'll move to the next one, what is the tax yield? So I was giving like Council a opportunity to address anything else on this behalf. Uh, so you're good. Uh, Valerie, good on this screen and Jared? Okay, because remember, once I open the floor to one of you guys, I usually give you guys a second chance around, so it's fair. All right, so do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this part of the presentation? Please let us know. Anything on Facebook, Jared?
No problem.
All right, thank you so much. I see nothing on the chat. All right, moving on to the next item, the tax yield. Uh, what is the tax, uh, the city manager's proposing?
Well, we're proposing for residential, single-family stay at point seventy-six as last year per hundred dollars.
Can you hold one second, Melissa? Can you put it up in the screen so it's visually for us to see it?
If you go to the budget, it should be on page six. All right.
Thank you.
And we're proposing for apartment, multi-family real property to stay point eighty-six per hundred dollars of assessed value. Commercial land real property tax rate to stay at point seventy-nine per hundred dollars of assessed value. Industrial real property rate to stay at the same rate, point seventy-nine per hundred dollars. Townhouse and real property tax rate to stay at point seventy-nine. The balance constant yield rate is gonna be point seven four nine. And the city could anticipate five point oh-six million in real property tax. That was the last year.
Okay, and you're on the same page. It is the same as last year, correct?
Yes, everything is the same, Mayor. Nothing is changing because, uh, what we are looking, Ron and I, we have a lot of new expenses, which I sent Mayor and Council an email today and I appreciate if you guys respond to my email. Because I don't see any way to re, to reduce the tax rate unless we have to cut some services and some of the purchases in other departments.
Okay, Council, I'm gonna open it up, the floor to you. Um. Usually we go war one and then war two, but Jimmy, you have your head now. We'll give you that. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Uh, can somebody in council maybe explain the rationale why the townhouse rate is three cents higher than the single home rate? I mean, the only, like, not many, it would, you know, in some ways they, they pay the highest because they're new and, you know, they don't have, uh, home set tax rate, but they pay probably the, some of the highest anyway. Was any rationale? Uh, I don't remember that, that it was higher.
Jimmy, is the multi-apartment families that paid that eighty-six? Everybody else is, oh, you mean the seventy-nine cents, my apology. Uh, Luke, go ahead. I heard you talk.
No, I was gonna say the townhouse property tax rate should not be higher than the residential, single-family home. So.
I was wondering about that.
Not sure how that happened, but we, um, will need to address that.
Uh, if I might, um, actually, that's the title. It should be seventy-six.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Thank you. I know, I was like, thank you for asking, uh, Jimmy, cause I was like. Okay.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Jimmy, do you have anything else to add on this?
No, I lowered my hand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Luke?
No, I, I appreciate this. Um, uh, I know it's gonna be difficult to, to lower the tax rate, but we usually always find. Find a way, um, once we kinda go through things line by line. Um, in, in years past, um, we get told. What is the cost of a one cent reduction to the single-family home and the townhouse tax rate? I think in years past, it's been between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere around there. I'm not sure if that's still the same.
It, it is, um, uh, right now forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars.
Forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. That's great. So I think, you know, mayor and council, when you're looking through the budget, um, if you see. Places to reduce the budget by forty-one thousand dollars, you know, that's a reduction in, in a one cent, um, uh, one cent to the tax rate. Um, just so the public is aware, um. Uh, you haven't felt this because your assessed values have gone up, um, um, but you've. The, the pain you've experienced is less than than what it would have been. It was ninety, our tax rate was ninety-three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Back six years ago, I think when Selena and I first joined, um, we have lowered it every year. Um, uh, when it was ninety-three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, it was one of the highest in the state for any municipality. Um, we have brought it down to seventy-six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, we are now lower than Colmar Manor, we are now lower than Greenbelt. Um, and we're lower than several other municipalities in the state, um, which is good. Um, we're still not down to Hyattsville, which I think is like sixty-three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, and it is very difficult to get down to that level of tax rate, um, if folks want the level of services that we still have. Um, uh, but there are things to cut, um, and we can always look at that and should look at that and will look at that. Um, so, um, our goal is to get down closer to that, um, uh, but we have some economy of scale problems we have to overcome with a city our size. Um, and so, you know, that's something that we always struggle with. Um, but we have made some changes in the class. We have done some realignments of certain departments, um, to cut costs where, where, where necessary. Um, but there has been increases in costs, um, in places and so we can look at. Where those increases have happened and if there's any room to trim. And, um, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Do you have a proposal, Luke, at all?
Um, I'm gonna look at what we need to cut, um, before I propose a tax cut. Um, I'm gonna see how much money we can really shave off. Um, the budget and expenses. So I'm gonna hold on that until I get a more holistic look.
Fine, I'm gonna go, Jared, Valerie?
Yep, thanks, Sam. Thanks, Luke, for that, uh, highlight for residents. Um, just kinda giving some. Some clarity or background to, uh, what can be kind of confusing to look at. Um, yeah, I, um. You know, I, I appreciate the direction that we've been heading in the last couple of years. Um. You know, I, I personally understand, Mr. Kamali, why you started with. A zero, um, or no, no change at the rate and, you know, the reason I would have some pause around further. Further reductions, and I'm not opposed to them, uh, are because, you know, we have. We're still on a period of, um, high inflation, um, that is lessening but not going away. Uh, and that's driven up, you know, costs for a lot of things, projects, uh, you know, um, services and, 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 uh, goods and so forth. Um, so, you know, I, I, I do have a little bit of pause, um. Cause I do wanna make sure that, you know, if we, we have a level of services, we have a, that people want and things that wanna be accomplished. And we also need to give ourselves, um, make sure we have enough room to accommodate growing costs. Um, so that's, that's kinda my main, um, that's kinda my main concern. I'm, you know. Would like to, you know, see whatever, again, we need to go through fir- need to go through first, look at what we're doing and look at the tax rate like Luke said. But, uh, that's, that's where my head is. Thank you.
Go ahead, Valerie.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm definitely interested in lowering the tax rate. Uh, you know, we passed rent stabilization, but property taxes continue. Continue to go up and so that's something that's, um, concerning. Um, but I think there's definitely a lot of potential room here, um, to readjust and, you know. Um, I know there's going to be a lot of federal and, you know, state and local grants that can help kind of work on some of this to save us some. Funding if we can think strategically about that, um, you know, as we go forward as well. Um. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to further conversations on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will say, uh, Ron, you said it was forty-three for every one penny that went down? If that is the case, um, put that in writing so we could keep it in mind. But also, uh, what definitely suggests, um, for you guys to start looking into what could be, um, shaved off. Uh, when it comes to the budget. It, because if the feel of the council is like the budget's gonna be reduced, even if it's for forty-three thousand dollars, let's figure out where could that happen. Um, so it's definitely important and usually we ask for one, two, three and figure out where it can be. Uh, we realized inflation's gonna go up, but assessed value has gone up. That's the reason why the budget looks a lot bigger. Um, so definitely, uh, uh, I will ask for you guys to come in for the next meeting with that, with quite a few suggestions of where it could be done. Um, I don't know what the process has been for requests, whether you guys have basically, um, accepted all the, um. All the, all the ask, or you guys have like, you know, scaled down on some of the budget ask from the various, uh, groups. That's something that, um, we need to look into as well because, um. Obviously, we all want a lot of mind to do different things, but the reality is like, at the end of the day. There's only so much the city could do, uh, without people losing homes and that's something that we definitely need to face. And we have been fortunate enough that, um, we have been working very hard to get grants. And Narpa has helped us out a lot and so has the Speed Camera to be able to do a little more than usual, right? But the reality is like, we also need to make sure we're, we're, we're working efficiently, uh, tying our, our belt. Um, legislation wise, um, unfortunately, once again, like, you know, the. The debt ceiling might have to be raised and, um, there's the whole back and forth between, um. Right now, the majority of the Republicans and the minority Democrats, uh, where the Republicans do not wanna raise, um. The, the ceiling and they have threatened to stop, um, when it comes to, um. Stop period, right? Which means that a lot of far residents do work for the government. And it might be a very hard time period for them as well. So please keep that into account. Hopefully does not get to that. But, uh, that is basically the word that is out there right now between, uh, the talks and, and everything. So. Um, the more we could like, you know, help, um, the better. So I would say, um, if you guys could come in with the forty-three and, and. As council, we call so help with some of that throwing suggestions, but if you guys could look at it, since you guys have more sense of what the budget looks like right now. And figure out what can be done. Um, also, when it comes to some of the projected grants that we have. Um, if that could be, uh, instead of, right? And, you know, I, I know the last one we got was actually a straight through grant and that matching, which was good. But if you guys could do that for us, it would definitely help. So we could have a next, uh, meeting with a lot more, uh, more meat to it. And, and that we could make a, we'll make our life a lot easier to, to, um, to get this through and, um. And then we'll work on what is it that we need to look at. Um, but do keep in mind that the more we're, where, um. We figure out this budget thing, once our person no longer be able to use, our life is gonna be a lot easier to be able to make these decisions. Cause right now, Appa supplements a lot of the stuff, including, you know, the scholarships, including the rental assistance, right? Um, but the reality is, you know, um, it's not gonna, it was the twenty-twenty-six, uh, Kamali, is that it?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-six, Mayor.
We could use it. So that's, um, that's around the corner. So we're, we're about halfway period. Alright, so those are my, my remarks at this point. Thank you for correcting, um, the, the item in the, in the screen council. Is there anything else? If not, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Um, I don't see, okay. So I'm opening up to the members of the community. Um, if anybody's in the chat. Or if anybody in ba- in Facebook, please let us know. I do see mainly like staff. Uh, directors, I see Rosio, I see, uh, Cheryl, I see Alma, I see Chief, I see, um. Who else? Well, obviously like Melissa, uh, Jared, uh, Kamali. Um, I think the chat is mainly us at this point. It might be more visual than anything. Alright, so. Members of council, hold on, let me see if I saw one raise hand in here. Jimmy, is you raise hand? Cause your screen wasn't on. Go ahead.
I think this is from. Sorry, I, I have a, uh, before you adjourn, I have something to raise.
Go ahead.
Well, before this discussion, you wanna close this discussion, it's not on this topic.
Um, that's what I was asking if it what, had it to do anything with, um, the tax and then we could move on to something else.
No, does not. But, uh, yeah.
Okay, but it has to do with the budget, right? Cause.
No.
Oh. Okay. Alright, um, that's tricky, Jimmy, because we're.
Well, I, I, the reason I said it was I, I asked that something be on the agenda, but somehow it slipped off. I wrote an email about, uh, that guy can, I mean, we just got lost in the email with, uh, earlier this month. About putting on the agenda about a homeowner's, uh, rental assistance, and that homeowner's assistance for repairs. Maybe we could hold off to the March meeting.
I would say would not fall under this agenda period. It might have to be brought up for the next meeting. I mean, this is, this is the in-between meeting. So, um, I think that's the reason why, Jimmy, I thought it was supposed to be on the regular meeting. I think that's.
This is in-between meeting?
Yeah, cause this is a special meeting. It's a special work session of the budget and, and the special legislative meeting.
Okay, this is the fourth. Okay, sorry. I'll bring it up in the, in the, uh, the work session in March. That's fine.
Alright, perfect. Thank you. So, going back to clarifying, uh, Valerie, I do see your hand up. Go ahead.
I'm just to Jimmy's point, um, we had it on the work session agenda for last week, um, and I took it off because I wasn't yet prepared with data. To bring the proposal to you, but I will bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, okay, that's what happened. I got it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the clarification, Valerie. And, okay, so council, I, uh, Jared, is there anything on Facebook?
No comment.
Alright, guys, so, um, anything to do with the budget or the tax yield? Luke, I see your mic open. Go ahead. If not, I will move to adjourn. So, uh, go ahead.
No, I would just say that I think that we're all, um, mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're all good now on. As far as just checking boxes and what we needed to do tonight, such that I don't think we need to have another meeting, but you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Before our next legislative session.
Um. Put the calendar, um, over, Melissa? So I will tell you that, um, if they could come with a proposal for our next regular meeting, we might not have to have one in the middle, but. If not, we're gonna be pushing this agenda because by March twenty-fifth, we should have, um. We should have something a lot more complete, especially for reducing taxes and make sure that everything's verified in, Luke. So we could add like whatever suggestion, whatever the, whatever there, the, the finance team is suggesting. To our regular legislative meeting, but that's gonna go on. But at this point, usually like on the March fif- twenty-fifth. It's more of like, we have adjusted the tax and it's like, we touch what it needs to be, right? Um, and then the eleven is like the, the, what's it called? Like the, the proposed reading of like, okay, this is our first reading. We shouldn't move anything unless it's more than. We don't talk about it until it's more than five thousand. So I, I will tell you, um. That we might have to have a meeting be- before the twenty-fifth to go basically line item by line item. Um, so that way we could work on it, but that's, that's where, where it's at right now. So you could check the box. But if not, like on the twenty-fifth, you're gonna have a very, um, long meeting and the previous year has been small because basically the. The directors have, uh, come up to us if we have a question, but we already done the, we, the read-through of, of the item.
Yeah, kind of. Uh, I mean, I looked at the schedule now and I see this, uh. This is not really gonna be discussed until March twenty-fifth. We do have a, a work session on, uh. You know, whatever the third, March seventeenth, I'm not sure why we can't start some of the discussion at the work session. You know, you know, do for maybe an hour so we can start getting into it line by line and then do the rest later. But, you know, there's no reason why we have to wait until the twenty-fifth. That's, you know, some, you know, initial discussion. So maybe we could do, you know. Just have a time limit, you know, for an hour, we can get done and then do the rest on Saturday for the twenty-fifth.
So I would tell you the reason why we do a separate Tuesdays because, um, we have very big agendas. The last agenda was how many hours, Melissa? Four or five hours for the last agenda? The last meeting agenda, Melissa?
It was like four hours.
It was four hours and that's that we move it along. So that, and that hour would be five hours. It'd be seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Five hours will put us at midnight. So that's the reason why we started doing the read-through in a separate Tuesday. So that will last for us to get to the meaty greedy and if we need to like, touch like the last hour. It will fall under a work session or a different meeting. That's the reason why it's done. But right now, um, it's gonna be up to you guys, how many items you. Like, you know, load on the March twenty-fifth meeting, but the reality is, um. I don't particularly believe that we need to be meeting after ten-thirty, closer to eleven. But our meetings are not getting any smaller. They usually get bigger as the season ends. So I could definitely, I don't wanna go back to what it used to be. Uh, Luke, if you remember correctly, one time we met until one o'clock in the morning on the budget. Because the work session was so big and even touching the budget like for a few, um, for, for a few just elongate. That's the reason why this meeting is set up. So that way, we start doing the, the read-through. And then if we need to like, you know, ha- add a little bit more, it could be on a work session, but just be aware. That's the reason why I'm thinking. We might need another meeting to start the read-through and then like the little bit of whatever is needed, um. For, for that, but it's gonna depend how much stuff you, you load on the March. Agenda, because if you load it as big as we loading the, the meetings, even as fast as I move the, the meeting. You're talking about twelve, twelve-thirty, or nine, and I usually lose you guys by ten-thirty. You guys are done.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I, I made, I made up like a, a different memory. I, I, I always remember the Saturday meetings is going through everything line by line and. And, and then making the adjustments after that. Um, I just, that's the memory I have of our Saturdays. And sort of timing out when the departments come and then go line by line with the department head. And then we have the tally and then coming out of that, we make the adjustments. Um, that's, that's how I remember our Saturday meetings going. So, and, and I'm fine with that being our Saturday meeting. Um, cause I think we can do that in one day. Um, so I'm just. So I'm, I'm just confused at, at, at why that wouldn't be the case on the, on the Saturday, the twenty-fifth.
You bring the directors once you already read the read-through to be able to address some stuff in the budget for them to be able to talk about it. But you don't sit there and go line item with light item with the directors on it because that will usually will go a long time, longer than an hour. Between questions and read-through.
Yeah, I just don't remember that. I'm just, I remember, I'll, I'll look, uh, yeah, I, I, I remember the Saturday hearings. As we go line item by line item through everything, make our changes. That's just how I remember it. Uh, my memory could be wrong. Um, but that's how I remember us always doing it. So I will.
Yeah. The other reason why the Saturday meetings became sure was because we started pulling it aside. So by twelve, one o'clock, we were done. Instead of like five o'clock when it was scheduled to be done. That's the reason why. But we could have a, we could have a nine to five if you guys want on Saturday. That's, that's fine as, as well. Just let me know. So I could. I could, I could mentally prepare for that long of a meeting, but that's the reason why we, we done, um, separate short meetings. Um, because if not, honestly, if this was an hour meeting, we could just add it to a regular meeting. We had no choice, no reason to meet. But anyway, so this, um, I would say, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into, but the reality is like, you know. Either we could do something what Jimmy suggested, which is added, add the extra hour to the work session so we could start doing the read-through. So that way on the Saturday, we have more of like, if we have additional questions directly to, um, the directors, it could be addressed that way. But, um, it, it's usually, we have not stayed until five o'clock. Um, or even three o'clock, um, in the previous Saturdays because we, we have done some of the pre-work prior to that. So, um, Mr. Kamali, can you please let the community know where they could find the budget?
Yes, okay. The budget is posted on the website and, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
It is under the city of Maranier and D dot org website, under the finance tab, or do we have a budget tab?
Melissa, where's?
It's under the finance tab.
On the finance tab.
Thank you, Melissa. And there are so far copies as well, the city have, they wanna pick it up from nine to five, right?
Yes, Mayor.
And they'll, and the. And the the front office, because I signed today when I I went over to drop some stuff. All right. So if you like a hard copy of the budget, they are available at City Hall. The staff is there from nine to five. Please show up before five o'clock if you need to. For them to be able to give you a hard copy of the budget. It's also online, digital, if you wanna also see and it's also attached to this agenda as well. All right, Kamali, I see your hand. Is that an old or new hand?
No, it's, you know, I just wanted to echo Luke's idea because on twenty-fifth, Mayor, with all due respect, we can finish everything and usually the process, you've been there, I've been there so many times. And we read it line by line. And if there is any question, the city manager will respond. Or the department heads are there, they can respond. So I don't see any reason that unless you guys want to schedule another meeting, we could finish everything on Saturday and it's been done for past seven years that I've been here.
Well, that's not my configure collection and we could agree to disagree. That's fine, but I definitely know that this Tuesday meeting was set up for that. And not just to do a thirty-minute meeting of a presentation. If not, it's a waste of all of our time because I do see all the directors here. And if it was just a simple presentation with no, no need for us to ask them questions, I definitely don't see the whole staff being here for the reason too. So every single staff member, I believe, is there for, Hopkins is here to hear this presentation for thirty minutes. So it does, it's not utilizing our resources in our team wisely if we continue doing that. All right. So if we have nothing else to, I'm gonna go ahead.
I would just like to add, Mayor, just that, you know, I think, you know, I would propose that we have a discussion up until ten o'clock, whichever comes first. You know, so we have some time to discuss it, but we not, you know, go, you know, after that. And maybe, Mr. Kamali, you could line up one of the directors or one of, one part of the budget to discuss. And we get through that and then we'll do the rest of the directors or or maybe your department, you know, you know, for a half hour so we can get, you know, somewhat into it if we have time, but that we should not, you know, we don't have time, you know, we'll do it Saturday. That's my my feeling.
Yeah, usually it's just a read through. So we could like, you know, the community gets to see the budget and we could get familiar. So that will, when we do it on Saturday, Jimmy, we're we're more in-depth into it and then the community is just aware of what's going on. Because right now they just have a piece of paper that they could pick up. So, I mean, I don't think they realize they couldn't pick it up starting whatever they they started. So at this point, it's like usually what, that's the reason why we read through it to like the line item by line item. But I think that, yes, we showed it to the work session to start reading through it. I mean, because it doesn't sound like we're gonna do it tonight. So that way, at least we could start discussing the budget and doing a run-through of where we see like money could be cut. That's probably the things that we do. And so that way on the twenty-fifth, we have a more of idea of what a what a budget is gonna look like. So that way on the eleven, we have a more complete reading. Because according to the council rules, if we move more than I believe is five thousand dollars, we need to like, I mean, make it even, make people even more aware of the situation. So it's not a complete, so I think it's like twenty thousand or something like that or fifty. I have to look at it. Then if we move more than fifty thousand from the original first reading, like we need, we need to like do a separate, add it to a separate agenda items before we read it. So I I will say that, yeah, we're gonna have to do the read through and part of that is gonna entail for us to look like as we read through it, where we see places for us to cut in order to get to the decrease in taxes. And that should definitely happen before the hearing on the on the twenty, on the twenty-fifth. So that we have more of a compete in. And you know what we did in the past, we have asked the city manager to talk to the directors and then look at their budget and figure out what they could cut because they know their budget is better. So that way they are aware of what could potentially, where they potentially could be done. So that makes it a little bit easier and and that way they also let us know where where they see some of the cuts could happen in their own budget in order to help us get to at least forty-three thousand dollars, if not more. Because forty-three will be like at least one cent reduction. All right. So seeing that there's nothing else, go ahead and move it to the agenda, Melissa. Okay, move it all the way up on the upcoming events. Thank you. So I'm gonna read the coming events. I promise, Melissa, I will do it. Women's History Month, March first, proposed budget here, we have on the twenty-fifth, at least on the schedule at this point. The Spring Festival Extravaganza, that's April first, Election Day is May first. Youth Scholarship Deadline is May twelfth and Maranier Day is May twenty. And the youth scholarships are available online if you need to download them. The election day information, it is on our website, correct, Melissa? Is there anything else I need to know? And the package is also available, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Melissa. And then the board for board for elections through the city will let us know when the debates and everything else is happening. And if you are applying, you have until March twenty, Melissa, four o'clock to turn in your package.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. All right. I did my due diligence. That is, I read through. All right. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.
Wow, you guys took forward the second then. Is there probably move and second any objections? Abstentions, hearing none. This meeting has come to an end. And Melissa, there's another meeting, correct? That's it? After after this one, I don't want to hear there's a hearing last minute.
Oh, that's it. Good night.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Kamali. Great work on the budget. Thanks, everyone.
Good night, good night.